I think that's kind of good. Call to order, the Avon Town Council meeting for March 23rd, 2023. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Julie, would you mind taking roll call, please?
Okay. Greg Susan?
Present.
Don Loudon?
Present.
Robert Pope?
Present.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Present.
Tim Roberts.
All right. First item on the agenda, consent agenda, to include the check register for today, the March 9th work session meeting minutes and approval of meeting minutes from our March 9th council meeting. Any questions or would anyone like to make a motion?
I have one comment. When I reviewed this, I talked to Julie about the post-race trash situation and how we're getting billed. And it seems like if you looked on page nine, they invoice us for every dumpster and every recycle. And then on top of that invoice is a surcharge. So instead of, and then the surcharges are all different. And one was $17, one was $7, one was $40. So in our conversation, it looks like, I think Keaton may have been doing some comparisons out there and we may end up changing providers. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it's not a good deal for the town and probably for a lot of people, so.
And I did call them. After I got off the phone with you today, our bill went up when we switched over by about $40. And coincidentally, we had gone from single billing to, these new speakers work really well, gone to single billing to now they were individual. So when I talked to the guy, it was an hour of my life. I will never get back. He couldn't explain why they billed separately, why they charged the different rates for fuel other than, he told us we should be grateful that we weren't being charged other fees that people get charged. And we had the lowest price they could offer, but he was willing to knock $6 off our bill if we went down to one recycle bin instead of the three. And that if we combined all of our dumpsters and had one dumpster, so it was only one trip. And I explained to him that it was one trip. There's a dumpster on this side of the building and a dumpster on this side of the building. That was his explanation, though. He was going to send some options over in writing that I can give to you guys and Ryan to look through. But yes, we are definitely shopping for trash.
I'm glad you're doing this because, and Greg, good points, because you know, these surcharges, all of a sudden they get layered on and it's hard to decide what, what the value is, if there is anything. It's like on anything, if they start itemizing and calling as a certain charge after the fact, it's just a hidden inflation.
It was an additional almost $70 in surcharges for fuel. And it was for their trucks. And he said that they also have to pay for other trucks and that we weren't paying for putting it into the ground. It was the whole thing, but.
Definitely. Sounds like we're gonna have an item for work session in the future.
Yeah. But don't, don't get worn out on this stuff. You gotta keep going at it.
Good catch. Any other comments or if not, would anyone like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as per Senate.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Susan?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four. Next item on the agenda is first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. This is not a Q and A session, but an opportunity to share your comments with the council. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mike Oring. I'm in the 7712 Department of Court, that's Plainfield, Indiana. The Fairwood subdivision. And he's gonna put something up here for me. This is a diagram of Dan Jones Road, which runs right here. And this is the north entrance into Fairwood, which is Augusta Drive. And when you guys approved this back in mid-July of 2020, you can see there was supposed to be a bypass lane here and there was supposed to be a whole bunch of striping here. There's a left-hand turner arrow there. And in the deceleration lane coming southbound, there's an arrow there. To make a long story short, last, in September of 2021, 18 months ago, they finished the bypass lane. There's actually asphalt laying off to the side of the road or whatever. It's not great. I talked to Ryan Cannon when they did the one down south and he said it's never as good as the original one. So I'll let you guys decide whether it's good or not, but nobody's come back to stripe the place. Okay? 18 months later, we have absolutely no striping. We have no left-hand turn lane. So everything that's gonna go in there is gonna back up traffic on northbound Dan Jones Road. And coming southbound, people trying to turn right cannot get in on the deceleration lane because the fog line going down the right-hand side is just straight down, you know, south and north. Okay? So I would have turned in an action item, but I haven't had a lot of success. I've only done one. And it's been nine months later and I'm still waiting for some answers from some people. So I thought I'd just bring it here and let you know that I believe this is a problem. It's unsafe. And just to give an example, I was coming home a couple of Saturday nights ago, southbound. There's a gentleman wanted to turn right into Augusta Drive and he couldn't find the turn lane. So he started slowing down and got down to about 10 miles an hour, but then all of a sudden took a hard right into Augusta Drive. Okay? Which means all of us following him had to go down to 10 mile an hour. He should have been able easily to come over in the deceleration lane, make the right turn. But again, it's not marked and hasn't been for 18 months. So if you can do something about it, great. Turn it over to the appropriate people. And if there's some other reason you can't, I'd like to know what it is at your convenience. Any questions of me? Okay. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, sir, but I just realized that Councilman Roberts wasn't here. So I cannot provide our updates for the liaison reports. I don't know if you want me to present that when it's time or give that to you.
Well, we, no department updates this evening. Those are usually our first meeting of the month.
I saw on the agenda there's.
Yeah. Oh, you're meaning for stuff that he's gonna report in a cap. Sure. I'll, you know what? I will take him and I'll, I'll, I'll read him off under his. Thanks, Dave. All right. Anyone else? Public comment. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that opportunity for public comment and move on to council comment and liaison reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Loudon.
Not much happened this last week for me. I did attend the Lou Malnati's ribbon cutting the other day. That was quite well attended, actually. There were, I got there at 3:00 and there were people from the public and the community that were coming in to order their pizzas already. So an hour before they opened.
Yep. Mr. Susan?
Couple of things. I had RDA and an RDC meeting on Monday night. Within the, actually both of those meetings, certainly in the RDC one, Greg Garretas presented the annual TIF reports. And I think just to kind of give everybody a heads up, we're gonna do some investigations on that and look at some of those bonds and possibly pay those off early, kind of position ourselves for the Eastern Grey Bond. That's the good news. Bad news is that those bonds are like 2%. So. But we'll get rid of it and replace it with something else. And then we have a Plan Commission meeting on Monday night. That's it.
Mr. Eisenbarth?
I'll start with that Plan Commission meeting. I'm, Greg, I'll plan on attending that. I want to hear some of these sayings. I've been watching as all of us have on social media. And I don't know if my mind's gonna change on things, but I want to hear what the public has to say about some of these developments. So that's one thing. I attended the Avon Rotary Meeting that did cover about the Plainfield Youth Program. And for consideration, it's kind of interesting listening to the Rotarians. What they were interested in was the mentoring opportunities. And I thought, wow, that's great. You know, in other words, they, they want to be volunteering to help to mold youth and make sure that they are mentored, coming on that. So that was good. Tox Away Day is coming up. It's gonna be in April, but it will be in Plainfield the first time. Oh, wait a minute. No, this one's in Brownsburg. It's, it's gonna be the first one. And I'll be giving updates as those things come along. That board hasn't been meeting yet. Road School, a number of people from the town. Steve Moore and I drove up together and had some good wood channel time. And while the classes were not the best really, at least for the ones I went to, I was telling Steve that we can data mine the past ones because LTAP gave me the link for that. And so then now we have all the past presentations, which I'll pass on to the town. And you know, you can just click on them. They're great. It's good to be able to have that. I think that's probably enough for me.
I'll, I'll cover for, for Tim here. So new officer Eric Cheek confirmed to start working for APD here on April 10th. He's already a certified officer, so doesn't need to go through ILEA. He'll just go through our field training. Police Department received just over $4,600 in a cast seizure that stemmed from an arrest from our enforcement division. We have two officers on light duty for the next month or so, covering from a surgery and another from an on-duty injury. And then I'm sure you all are aware, unfortunately, officers and detectives responded to the fatal juvenile overdose on March 15th. Detectives worked with our partnership with Brownsburg Narcotics and the, what do you guys call it? It, it, what's that acronym? Yeah, it's the Task Force, Indiana Crime Gun Crime Gun Task Force. But there's a unique CIGIC, that's it, to arrest a juvenile and an adult on level one dealing resulting in the death on this case. So and you guys saw the press release earlier. For me, had the opportunity to attend and speak at the Greater Avon Citizens Academy. It was for our boards and commissions. So it was really interesting. Shane Summers from the Township Board joined. It was an interesting conversation. That Men in Action Read Event was last, it was last week, last Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. As Greg was there, we had, Dave was, we had, we had a number of our employees attend. It was just rather awesome event as always. But great news is this is the first time every elementary class in Henders County had a reader there to read to them. So it was just, that was fantastic. And the last one, earlier this week, I appointed, we had an opening on the Continuity of Operations Committee from the Fire Department. We got that recommendation from them and I've appointed Deputy Chief Porter to that, to the CEO Committee. That's it for me. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is the WCCD easement request. Ryan, I assume you're gonna speak to this first?
Yeah. I think I did. I sent a note to all of you too, but I've been working with West Central on this easement. There were some concerns that we had in the actual easement language, not actually just the provision of the easement. And so Mitchell had provided some feedback to them. West Central needed some more time to review those and to consider those with their attorney. So my suggestion is that we just table this for tonight. And once West Central gets back to us, we'll put it back on an agenda or have another discussion about it.
So you need a motion and action item to that. With that being said, would anyone like to make a motion or any other discussion beforehand? Pardon me.
You said this is on Dan Jones and Westover Boulevard?
Yeah, there's two locations. It's the relocations for the Dan Jones widening project that we're doing. And so they have a force man that they have to get out of the way of the construction. So they were asking for it in that vicinity. There are two different locations.
I'll make a motion that we table the WCCD easement request.
I'll, I'll second that one. Julie, would you mind taking roll call vote, please?
Okay. Robert Pope?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing and Resolution 2023-04, confirmatory resolution for the rider tax abatement. Can you speak to this? Do you want me to open the public hearing first?
It's up to you. If you want me to speak to it before you open the public hearing, that's fine. Or if you want to do the public hearing first and then I'll speak to you.
Give us the introduction.
Sure. So this is, you guys did do a declaratory resolution on this previously. And so this is the process. You do a declaratory resolution, then it has to be advertised for a public hearing. So the public hearing is tonight. As a reminder, this is rider. They are going in the same building on County Road 100 South as Radial. They're taking the remaining square footage that Radial isn't taking. So this will fill up that building once it's approved. They are asking for a personal property tax abatement and they're asking for five years at 50%. That is the same request that was made by Radial and is substantially less than what they could actually ask for. They can ask for the 10-year sliding scale. So the Tax Abatement Committee, which does consist of Dr. Wyndham, John Taylor, and myself, did review it and we do recommend approval.
At this time, so we'll open the public hearing at 7:16 on the Resolution 2023-04, confirmatory resolution for the rider tax abatement. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing, seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. Any questions for staff?
I'm just, I'm looking at the, the nine-page document and I don't know, all checks in the boxes and everything. I don't see anything here that catches my eye. Does anyone see anything? I mean, it.
The, I wanted to note, we've discussed for a while now having a target of a job, an hourly rate of about $25 an hour. They're pretty close to this. I think the average was just under 24. So they're, they're getting up there. They're, they're getting closer to our target. That also could be a matter of inflation. So our number probably goes up from there.
You know, good points that, that estimate total that they have of, what is that, 3 million? Yeah, 3,278 for year one. I guess, guess that would just be, we take it at that, that they should be able to have that. What do we, there's no teeth we could put behind that. I mean, if they don't do it, then we can come back, but.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We'll evaluate this every year.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna remind you. These are, these are always estimates on their part. And then every year, they actually have to submit a compliance form, SCF1, that comes back to you guys every year that documents to you whether they're fulfilling their commitments of the tax abatement. And so every year you guys can decide if you want to continue doing it and question that. So you do, you do have the ability, you know, you're, you're giving up one year, but every year you are able to look at it and make sure that they're doing it.
Well, then we do have that check and balance. So, okay. No, I have no questions on that.
I feel like there's some backstop questions I need to make sure we cover. Is this, does this site qualify for and is found to be an economic revitalization area?
Yes.
The economic revitalization area, oh, nope, sorry, that's not the right one. The review of the statement of benefits and all the pertinent information, the estimated value of this development in this area is reasonable for these projects. We've got the guy that we need to speak to this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, John, so John was just on his way back from Salt Lake City and got stuck in Detroit. So he was running a little late, so I was handling it for him.
Were we here to talk about an abatement?
Yeah, we're, we're right on the tail end. Robert has like three more questions to ask you real quick and we'll be done.
Well, I was just gonna talk about the answers to number 52.
Mr. Taylor, go for it.
Well, when we did the resolution two weeks ago, there was one striking area that hadn't been filled out by the, by the people that were wanting the abatement. And it was what the, what the abatement will give them in terms of how much taxes will be abated and how much taxes they'll pay. And if you have it in front of you, it's question number 52 that will show you. And we're with the, what we're offering them is a five-year, 50% abatement on their personal property. And since I don't have something sitting up here, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. But that's, that's the abatement that we're offering.
And I think I only have one more. Mitchell's nodding his head, yes. I feel like I'm in the right direction. Is the totality of these benefits sufficient to justify this abatement?
Yes.
I feel like John's be the one that I'd be getting the best answer from, most accurate answer from.
Well, if they weren't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't offer them an abatement. No, I mean, I, all kidding aside, you know, we just don't offer abatements to everybody. We take a lot, I mean, we have an abatement committee and we discuss it and we take a look at the numbers and we talk to the company and, and then we make a decision whether or not we're gonna offer something. And you know, many times on a personal property abatement, on a big manufacturing company, their equipment may be 30, 50, 100, 200, $500 million with lots of jobs. And you say, this, this, these are the kind of companies we want to bring. And, and although this is not a huge investment in inventory or in, in personal property, we're just now really starting to see these kinds of companies coming. And I think it's important that people realize that if they come to Avon, we're, we're willing to talk to them about offering incentives to come here versus other places. You know, as, as you know, and I'm sure the three of you know, you know, we had pinheads all kind of wrapped up here and then it kind of fell apart because of a, of a spill from dry cleaners many, many years ago. And then when they came back to get it, then they were outbid. Well, now that's going to Brownsburg. So it's obvious they were very interested in this particular area of the state. You know, they looked in Greenwood and they just couldn't find what they wanted. They needed something retrofit. And this is a bowling alley. This makes the retrofit a whole lot cheaper than even what they would have been over here. But every project is different and every project you have to look at on the merits of the project and decide, is this what we want in town? You know, I've, I've many times have spoken to town council people in different communities and say, this is one way that you say, you have the ability to say to a company, we're not really interested by not saying we're not really interested. And that's by not offering any kind of incentives when they're maybe receiving incentives in other places. And you're just kind of saying, if you come here, you know, we're happy to have you, but we're not gonna give you any assistance. And that usually kind of shuts the door and they go somewhere else.
Thanks, John. Forgive me. I, I'm asking that question to make sure we have, as a council, have given our due diligence and what's the, we have made the following findings pursuant to Indiana Code. So I trust, wholly trust that you had the right answer, know that it was well worth it. I just want to make sure it's on the, that question, any answers on it, on the record.
One other thing I'd like to remind you guys to put on the record, it specifically does say in the resolution as well. But one of the requirements is that it not be a retail use and this is not a retail use. So. We'll cover that one too, Robert.
That is, that's number three. Thank you. It is not a retail business.
I could have answered that if you'd asked the question.
With that being said, any other questions or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Resolution 2023-04, that we accept the resolution for the designating economic revitalization area and approve the property tax abatement application. The five-year cycle is stated here.
It's personal property.
Personal property. Yep. I gotta get that word in there. As stated at the heading of the 2023-04.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Don Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next item on the agenda, Introduction of Ordinance 2023-04, amending the right-of-way permit fees and annual bonds. I assume Steve, you're talking to this one.
So previously you did amend the ordinance to include a higher permit fee. And then you also included in that ordinance the ability to go with a blanket bond for a year. That blanket bond has gotten very popular. And because it's gotten so popular, they're using it in, on numerous projects. And the amount that we had approved previously isn't really enough to give us comfort that we're covered for that blanket bond. So we're just asking for the amount to be changed.
The, what's, 5,000, is that correct? Is our current amount?
Yes. And so with, with some of the utilities having, you know, 10, 20 projects going at it at the time, that's just more than we anticipated at the time. And so 5,000 really isn't enough to cover that.
And this dollar amount is an aggregate dollar amount. It could be one project. It could be five projects.
Yeah, they have the option of going with the blanket bond or the single bond.
My only que, it's not question, just one correction. And I know Mitchell, you, you guys will have an updated one before we get the final reading of the, of the ordinance. There's a few places in Section 4-122A in both of those chapters that mentions city versus a town. I assume just copied from other language. That's the only, that's the only thing to note that I think needs to be changed. That's, that's it for me. Any other questions for staff? All right. Then let the record show ordinance 2023-04 as introduced. Next item on the agenda, Legal Counsel Report. Mitchell, Mr. Ray?
I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Next item is the second of two public comment opportunities. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment. Next opportunity, council comment. Anyone?
My only question is, have we done anything or where are we at regarding the ARPA funds and the LIT funds?
The ARPA funds, we've been working on. We do have more time on the ARPA funds than we thought. We thought we had till the end of '23, but we do actually have till the end of '24. So if you guys recall, we did discuss that in our strategic session. So we're waiting to get some numbers back. The Government Center will be getting numbers back in April. And I know that Sean has been working on the, I'm not, sorry, I forget what he was naming the, the substation or training facility, whatever. He's, I think he's working on getting some numbers for that too. So when we get those, we'll, we'll probably have another work session with you guys to talk about that. The LIT funds, we, we finished creating the fund, so we're already receiving those. And so you guys will at some point need to do additional appropriation to actually authorize the police department to spend that because we didn't know that when we did our budget. So that's not something. So in order to allow the police department to spend that money, we will have to appropriate it at some point. But other than that, there, there's no other action you guys need to take at this point.
Thank you.
I've got one thing. So Ryan, it's a road school question here. Are we participating in the asset management, the port, a public portal for LTAP? We do that? Okay.
We are. We're actually, we're required to, to qualify for the Community Crossing Match and Grant.
Excellent. Okay.
So Steve actually updates it and submits it every year prior to December 1st.
And I'd be curious, Steve, I'll get with you afterwards about trying to compare ours with others. Yeah, I know, yeah. Do we know if the county's doing it for the bridge conditions?
I haven't seen it, but I believe they are. I think. I haven't seen it, but I believe they are. I think they're actually required to by state law. So I don't, again, I haven't seen it because it's the counties, but I'm certainly sure they, they have it. We could probably request it from John.
And they would probably do the FWHA, FHWA guidelines and follow all that? Okay. So if they do those standards, they can compare them. Okay. I'm just curious on that because I know the bridges are always a, a tough one. It's, it's an expensive one to handle.
Yeah. And I may remind you guys that every year, the MPO is actually required by law to submit a report that actually compares all the, the towns and what their conditions are to each other. And so if you kind of remember, everyone's kind of on pins and needles when they come out to know how they compare to other people. So they do kind of a graphical version. Certainly Steve can tell you what ours are. And I think we're working on getting ours into GIS to show you guys in a different way versus the way it's submitted in the portal is really just a, is a spreadsheet exercise. So I don't, it'd be hard data for you guys to look at. But I think we'll, we'll work on getting it in a format where you guys can see the whole town and how our, our condition ratings compare.
Okay. And then Steve, I didn't thank you for sending that email about the Transportation Committee on getting with the MPO on, on feedback on their brochure that they had. That's what they're looking for? They want feedback on that bro, on that two-page brochure? Okay. We can't give them any more than that? About having a bus route out here? No.
Yeah. I mean, the MPOs are not really the, the bus. I mean, Serta is probably the people we would want to talk to about trying to get a bus route out here. And so there have been some discussions in the, the town managers. Plainfield already has a relationship with Serta, and that's how the Plainfield Connector is running through Serta. So the MPO is probably not the right people to work through on that. But certainly, if that's a discussion we want to have about the enhancement of transit, I've kind of had some preliminary discussions about extending eventually. And Brownsburg has expressed some interest in that as well, that eventually maybe that would run up, run over Reagan and serve all the industrial parks. So certainly, that's probably a further discussion to come at some point about, is the town interested in doing that? Currently, Plainfield has a special economic development to risk district that's raising the money to pay for that. So if other people want to get on board, we'd have to find a way to contribute something financially.
Yeah. I know the public hasn't been real strong on that, but boy, we really need to have it. It would be, it would help the Rockville Road.
Right.
You know, thing. And then Steve, do you want me to send that to you or go directly to them?
It should come from the town, so you should send it to me.
Okay. Will do. Okay. Thanks. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Steve. Next item, council calendar.
Your next meeting is April 13. You do have a work session prior to that. So 5:30 PM work session, 7 o'clock town council meeting.
That's it. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.